The special session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:01 PM on Tuesday, July 18, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. We are not live streaming tonight's meeting because of technical -- or are we live streaming tonight's meeting? We are not. We are not live streaming tonight's meeting because of technical difficulties, but it will be available on youtube.com/ISD535 following completion of the meeting. The agenda and documents for the meeting are available online on rochesterschools.org/simply. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Treasurer Garcia.
Here.
Clerk McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda has been approved. Our first item is an action item, 3.1, June 1, 2023, Policy Committee Recommendations. This is an action item. The Policy Committee met on June 1, and these are the recommendations to the School Board. One note to the Board, since the last briefing of these policies, we've removed Policy 506, Student Discipline, from approval at this meeting. We have some additional -- different kinds of changes, and it will be on the agenda for approval at the July 25 meeting. So I'll read the resolution, ask for motion and second, and if received, we'll open the floor for discussion. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 accept the recommendations of the Policy Committee for the policies and procedures listed. Policy 514, Bullying Prohibition; Policy 526, Hazing Prohibition; Policy 530, Immunization Requirements.
Move approval.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution has been approved. Item 4.1, in Other Business, Closed Session Superintendent Evaluation Leadership Component of 2022-23. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D05, Subdivision 3B, which allows the Board to go into closed session to evaluate the performance of an individual who is subject to its authority. While in closed session, the Board will engage in a confidential discussion of the scheduled annual performance evaluation of Superintendent Kent Pecel. In addition, pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D05, the Board will summarize our conclusions regarding the evaluation at the July 25 meeting. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session?
Some.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Board moves into closed session at 5:04 PM.
Chairman. 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 Chairman.
And here in Other Business, this special session is adjourned at 7:12 PM.
Now we get to go home.
Switch.
Switch.
I guess take our notches. The Board would like a five-minute break, however.
I guess it's break. I don't think so. Can't still be asleep.
How do you know? How do you know that?
Because this is Garcia right here. Remember we switched. Somebody switched.
I'd like it to be. Why? Yeah. You want to move the yard? Well, just behave yourself. You wanted a couple chairs.
I'll take your part. That's true. It's my job to make sure you don't, but you might. No. I saw. Shh. 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 We knew that. I love that, actually. She threw one and says, "Pecel admits to liking children." Admits. Likes children. That's true. That's true. The study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order
at 7:16 PM on Tuesday, July 18, 2023, in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. We'll not be live streaming tonight's meeting, but it is being recorded and posted on our YouTube channel at ISD535youtube.com. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available at rochesterschools.org/simply. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecel, a non-voting ex-officio member and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Treasurer Garcia.
Here.
Clerk McLaughlin.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Workman.
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item 3.1, in Prep for Action, is approval of final expenditures funded by the 2019 Facilities Referendum. This item is in preparation for Board action at the July 25 meeting. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan and Board members. We are here, in many ways, to, I think, celebrate a very important milestone in the life of the school district, the completion of a very important referendum to open some new facilities and make some other improvements in our school district. Before I turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, John Carlson, I actually want to thank one of the community co-chairs, Linda Freeman, who's here, of that effort. We, thanks to Linda and the many other people who worked on that effort, have got four new great buildings and a number of really wonderful facilities that will be with us for decades. And it was a great privilege for me to show up in this community and have all of that underway. We are also going to be recommending to the Board tonight that we allocate some of the remaining funds from that referendum to three priorities that I think are very much in keeping with this Board's direction for our work going forward, one of which will be to enhance the security in some of our buildings, primarily with adding cameras, which have proven very, very useful to keeping our students and staff safe. Second, we have some work to do with some antenna systems in some of our buildings where cell phone and other coverage is limited. And finally, I am recommending that we do not proceed with the decision to close the swimming pools at our middle schools at John Adams Kellogg and Willow Creek. And before I turn it over to John, I just want to say for the record that the fact that I was captain of my high school swimming team has nothing to do with the fact that I'm recommending we don't close swimming pools, but it's good they weren't soccer fields or football stadiums, because they might have been gone. Seriously, we know that swimming is an incredibly valuable skill and that we have growing numbers of young people in our community who, absent the opportunity to learn at school, especially following the closure of the YMCA's pool, might not have access. And so it's a recommendation I'm pleased to make now. And ask John to kind of take us back a little bit to the other accomplishments of our referendum before we put this vote for you in study session tonight.
Well, very good. Thank you, Superintendent Pecel, Chair Nathan. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things that did get done through the referendum. So stepping back, we purchased new land for Dakota Middle School and Longfellow Elementary School. We demolished old Bishop Elementary School and Longfellow Elementary School. We built four brand-new schools, which was no minor undertaking. Bishop, Longfellow, Overland, and Dakota are all newly built. A brand-new pool now sits at Century High School to complete that facility as probably was intended 25 years ago. We have work going on right now this summer at Mayo High School. Our auditoriums at our high schools were updated, both in their theatrical lighting and their audiovisual systems, so they're much more current. We now have secure entries in place at almost all of our buildings, and we have new visual emergency notification systems at nearly all of our buildings that did not previously have that technology. There have been a couple deviations along the way since this was planned out almost five years ago now at this point. We have held off on doing secure entries at both the Edison Administrative Building and the Fridell Building until we make sure we fully understand what the long-term use of those two buildings is going to be. Same thing with the new visual emergency notification systems. We are withholding completing those at the two buildings I just mentioned. We have kept open, as Superintendent said, the pools at John Adams, Kellogg, and Willow Creek. We have not purchased vacant land for a potential fourth high school. And if I can bring you back to our 2022 enrollment projection study we did last year, we concluded at that point that it would probably not make sense that we would be talking about a new high school in the medium term of the next 10 to 20 years unless there's sudden and significant construction of additional homes within our district's boundaries. And we have put in distributed antenna systems at our new buildings. This was a change order that we did along the way. Part of the problem we discovered very early on after opening Overland Elementary School first was because of the precast concrete walls and how thick they are, it was rather hard to get emergency radio signals through as well as cellular signals. So those are now in place at the four brand-new schools. This has also been something that's been on our radar to do at a few of our existing schools. If you think of Mayo High School, similar problems exist with the round building and the thick concrete walls there. And so we'd like to take a look at doing that in the future as well. And so we have stayed within budget. We actually have $3.1 million that is unspent from the referendum, and we are taking a look at what should be done with those remaining dollars. And as Superintendent has mentioned, we believe that we should invest in similar projects in some of our existing buildings. For example, we are specifically recommending that we keep the pools open, that we not close those. Part of that is due to the fact that the YMCA recently closed their community pool, and there's become less access available for swimming lessons. We are not proposing that we build a new pool at Dakota Middle School that does not have them. What we are saying is we should keep the assets that we already have and maintain them going forward. We believe that we should put in additional security features that are existing buildings, and by that I primarily mean security cameras. We want to make sure that we have adequate coverage of all of our high-traffic areas so that if something does happen, we are able to go back and review what happened. It also would set us up well to do future technologies with perhaps some monitoring software that could spot things happening before we know they're happening. And then, as I just mentioned, like the Mayo High School, using some of that money for distributed antenna systems would be the third recommended priority with remaining funds. So with that, I would open it up for questions or turn it back to the Superintendent.
Director McLaughlin. Speaking of the middle schools and keeping the pools in the middle schools, do those require any significant maintenance, or what's their status?
Yes. We had a facility study done on our pools to figure out what it would cost. I don't have those with me tonight. I believe it's in the ballpark of around $4,000 to $500,000. Work needs to be done at Kellogg Middle School, and we plan to schedule that in since we are going to be doing a major indoor air quality project over the next couple summers at Kellogg. The John Adams and Willow Creek, we'd probably hold out for one or two more summers, and it would probably take a similar amount of money to get those back up to the standard they should be.
And would that be funded through our long-term facilities maintenance?
Yes. When we are repairing things and keeping things like-for-like, basically, we have access through the long-term facility maintenance plan, which we'll be talking about in two more agenda items.
Director Barlow.
First off, it's commendable that $3.1 million, and these projects were delivered on time and under budget, so two was two staff and those who are a part of that. I do have a question regarding the Edison-Fridell and their current level of security. You're not suggesting that they are insecure. There is a level of security, but it's not that hardened security that we may think exists in our more newer buildings, but can you maybe briefly ask the difference?
Yeah, very good question. So both of the buildings do have secure entries in the sense that they are locked during all of the business days, so they are closed to the public, and they have door buzzer systems that are monitored, and you have to buzz in to be granted access, and there's camera watching those. What we would have done had we proceeded, like at Fridell and Edison here, is we would have actually changed the layout, and the person entering the building would have come into a more secure area, and they would have been live greeted by someone before they were given access to the rest of the building. So it would have been slight configuration changes. But they are still locked down. They are still closed. You still have to buzz in. So we feel that they are adequate. They're just not at the same standard that we would construct a brand-new building to.
Other questions or comments from Board members? One of the items that you mentioned in the background information was that the Board could authorize borrowing an additional amount of money to maximize the available voter-approved authority. So I assume that you've taken a look at all of our facility needs and have concluded that we should not do anything with that. I'll let you answer that.
Yes, you do have additional authority. Our legal counsel and our bond experts or financial advisor have said you do have authority to borrow a certain amount more of money. We are not recommending you do that at this time since we still have the $3 million remaining in our proceeds account that we can use for these projects. But I think it was something that we want to keep in mind, and if we feel like we don't have enough money to do the security items that we are recommending, we may come back to with a recommendation to consider borrowing additional funds.
And is there an expiration date to our authority?
The answer I got on that was for sure within 2023 or 2024. It's possible. They did not give me a time certain deadline on when that must be done.
And it would still have to be related to the original intent of the 2019 referendum question?
That's correct. So it would follow the projects that were described broadly within the ballot, which was security projects is part of the language in there. And so same with buying land. So if perhaps maybe a lot did come available at some point that you wanted to act upon, that could be a way to fund the additional land at that time.
But at this time, this is not a recommendation you're bringing to us or an action that we're taking.
That's correct. We are recommending you hold on any decision to borrow more money, but to first spend the $3 million that's left and available on kind of a tiered approach of security and then distributed antenna systems after that.
Any other questions or comments?
Director Workman.
Yeah, just a comment on the borrowing. I mean, I think it's always more prudent to not borrow money if you don't have to because there is a cost to borrow.
That's right.
So here are no more questions. This will come back to us, I believe, on the consent agenda on June 25.
July.
July. Thank you. I can't keep this month straight. And of course, Board members will have an additional opportunity to ask questions prior to an event. Item 3.2, Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. This is another prep for Board action item, but we have not a date determined for that action or if we are going to take action. So Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. As I hope Board members are aware, I think on most issues, it's my job to bring you a recommendation that you can make a decision on. But as I've been talking with our Chair and Vice Chair, we've also realized that there sometimes is a value in having a discussion at a Board meeting that is open-ended to get a sense of how Board members are thinking about an issue before we actually do the staff work to bring you a recommendation. So the item before you tonight is really just an initial discussion about the Board's desire to bring back a committee that Board policy suggests may be created but doesn't mandate be created, and that's what was previously known as the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. One of the questions that we thought we would put before you is your interest in convening that group in general, and some of you who were on the Board or in the administration when it was last in place may have some memories about the value and the work that it did. And then a second level of input that we would welcome is if we want to have that committee, would the Board want it to be a Board Staff Committee, which is how, for instance, we support the work of the Policy Committee with administration attending and the Board members forming the committee? Or would we want to have community members to be a part of a Long Range Facilities Planning Committee? So I'll ask John if he has any other insight, having been around for some of the previous iterations that he wants to add. But again, as Chair Nathan mentioned, we're not asking for action tonight. Just candidly, we all know committees take a lot of time. If they're going to be a serious effort, we are on the cusp of launching our new Community Budget Advisory Committee next month, and so adding another committee was something that we thought we should put before you to get a sense of how you all might be thinking about it at this time.
Yeah, I would just note that the last time I have record of going to a Long Range Planning Committee meeting was on December 11, 2017, so we're coming up on six years. And at that point, the recommendation was basically to turn over to or appoint a Facilities Task Force to study the need for a referendum. That commenced in 2018, which ultimately concluded in a recommendation to the School Board in late 2018, early 2019, and then the referendum got worked from there. And so again, the committee has been basically inactive for five to six years now.
And the last time that the Board approved a charge statement for the Long Range Planning Committee was 2015. Between 2015 and the time that the Facilities Task Force was activated, it was active and inactive depending on the topic. I think the biggest activity they did was boundary changes and then some recommendations regarding district-wide option schools was sort of re-energized for that and then given more formal work with the Facilities Task Force. Director Barlow.
Again, because this committee has existed for a long time and met very, very infrequently, I'm wondering if a better way forward would be simply to disband this and then just have ad hoc committees when needed, you know, for a specific, for a specific need.
So it would be perhaps some use value. How did the Long Range Planning Committee differ from the Facilities Task Force?
Yeah, so I think the Long Range Planning Committee, I have some memories of talking about things that weren't even necessarily facilities-related. So I remember one time we studied providing free lunches for all students. That was long-range, and it was planning, and it was a committee. So they worked on a topic like that. Whereas the Facilities Task Force was directly focused on facility needs and how to solve facility needs.
And I think that's reflected, Director Barlow, in the original charge statement. The Long Range Planning Committee doesn't include the name "facilities," but it does include facilities, programs, procedures for greater efficiency and cost-saving, study of items such as alternate calendars or curriculum, facility use or innovations, and ensure new initiatives and expenditures aligned with the district's strategic plan. So it was a broader planning, which I think reflects the variety of the agenda items. And I think if you look at that original charge statement and see some of the development of the work that we've done with the strategic plan, as well as curriculum development and the Community Budget Advisory Committee, we're covering a lot of that work already in other areas. So I think that's why we're narrowing on a facilities conversation, because we have planning capabilities in many of the other areas of the original charge statement but not facilities. At least that's how I'm parsing out the pieces.
Yeah, I have a question. Do you see a need for one at this point? I mean, do we have any long-range facilities that we are potentially planning for? I mean, I would hate to have a committee exist just because it's on paper. Looking for something new.
Right. I do think there is a need for a conversation. I had mentioned in the previous Board item about talking about Edison and Fridell specifically, but we know that there's going to be other issues that we should talk about related to facilities more directly. And I think part of that work will happen in the next year of the strategic plan work as we talk about refining recommendation for our transportation specifically.
I think, Director Workman, it's the right question. You know, are there issues right before us? And I think it alludes to Dr. Marvin's point, too. I personally, right now, think we do have a set of facilities issues that we need to bring to the Board. I don't think they lend themselves to a Community Staff Committee. You do that when you really need to bring in sort of big-picture input on strategic direction, and we're about to do that with the budget work. We also, under Dr. Aubameau's leadership, are really revitalizing our Community Curriculum Instruction Advisory Committee as well. And so that, and, you know, running good collaborative committees with people who have day jobs and don't come to, you know, the school district necessarily with a toolkit of history or tools, it's a heavy lift. And so at least from my standpoint, I would probably recommend that if we do bring this committee back, it be a Joint Board Administration Committee, very focused on the next-generation facilities issues. We certainly would seek public input on major issues, but that's a different creature than recruiting people to join a committee in the midst of how busy everyone's lives are these days. And I think it really is the will of the Board. If you would like a subgroup of the Board to be working with John and the team on these next-generation facilities issues in committee, we certainly could do that. We also would obviously be bringing these information, these recommendations to you in a timely, transparent fashion where you could grapple with them in a study.
in a timely, transparent fashion where you could grapple with them in a study session and give us direction there as well. So to summarize, I probably would not recommend having this be a joint community district committee at this time, but would defer to board members' interest in having a committee of staff and board members for this work.
And could it be part of the charge statement of the committee to consider when additional community input might be necessary to either bring to the board or bring to the working committee?
Certainly, if we didn't.
Yeah, I guess for me, it's like more of a worldview question, and so I would certainly defer to those of you who are going to be doing the long-range planning to provide your recommendation on how we do that or what we do. But I guess in my, in my reaction to some of my colleagues, either while we're campaigning or in the work that we're doing now, and the way that I think about things is to only think about next generation as short-sighted. So I don't know if this is like going to be the golden thread committee, but I would love for us to think that seven generations away from ourselves or to, and we're at least to be looking like 10 and 20 years down the road. So maybe we don't need a long-range planning committee specifically for that because it sounds like we're doing those things in all of these different areas, but maybe one that's sort of looking at any plan that we have that's more than three years out, and how are those all coming together to support our strategic plan? How are those going to benefit our students in 2033, 2043 instead of just right now today? So again, I don't necessarily know that we need right now, today, another committee, but I feel like we should just as a district be doing that in any decision that we're making.
I think that's a compelling point, Dr. Garcia. Again, I would suggest, I think that we're the board to choose to have that committee because you make a really good point, like the future's here before you know it. I would recommend it is a board staff committee that seeks community input rather than having like three community members necessarily on it. And that's really related to the very specific nature of facilities. Like, what do we do with Fidel? Like, that's, it's very, and so that's kind of why I think the idea of where we were to do it, a board staff committee that is charged with that kind of long-term thinking and that seeks input on decisions but isn't necessarily charged with, as we were, I think, appropriately with both the curriculum committee and the budget committee, having community members on the committee on an ongoing basis. But I don't feel strongly about this. I would just, that would be basically my recommendation.
Director Orkman.
Do we have a current charge statement for a long-range facilities planning committee? I know you read the old one, and since we don't have one, is that something that should be developed before the long-term? Any of us, do we need to have a, do we need to have a charge statement for the committee?
And I think the thought on the process tonight was to give feedback to the superintendent as to whether the board felt we wanted a committee, and then that would be part of the recommendation from superintendent as to what the charge statement language might include. Is that right?
Yep.
Any other thoughts?
Thank you.
Do you have what you need?
Yeah, we'll give this, we'll give this some thought, and we'll look, we'll look back to you, and obviously, we can also continue to talk about this in executive committee as well.
Next item is 3.3, Approval of Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Plan. The board is planning to take action on this at the July 25 meeting. Superintendent Pecal.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. I'll turn it over to John right away, except just to add that this is a requirement of all school districts, and as I have said since I got to Rochester, this is one of multiple areas, but an area in which I think Rochester deserves, Rochester Public Schools deserves credit for really good process over an extended period of time. And I know we're all committed to maintain that. And I've been in districts where that was not the case, and this work can blow up when you are not incredibly diligent about your long-term facilities plan. And that has happened in recent years in Minnesota, and so we're not going to go there.
All right. Well, thank you Superintendent and Chair Nathan. Just very quickly, the plan has been updated. This is, like Superintendent said, an annual thing that we must do. This is really the first component of setting the 2024-2025 school year budget. We've worked through the plan. We've come up with a number that's similar to prior years on the pay-as-you-go, but you need to approve by the end of July so that the staff at the Minnesota Department of Education can take that number and bring it forward to you on your levy approval document in September. And then that sets the revenue for the '24-'25 school year. Just quickly, long-term facility maintenance is broken up into three different kind of categories of funding. There's a little bit of state aid to it, and there is the pay-as-you-go levy, which is meaning you're setting a property tax levy and you're paying expenditures out of that as you go each year. And then there is the bonding part where you tackle the bigger projects, you borrow the money, and then you work those. Currently, right now, the money that we are spending on the last borrowing is going towards finishing up the John Marshall three-summer indoor air quality project as well as some other upgrades to the facility. I was just telling my colleagues yesterday that you will soon begin to notice that the building will transition from a red or maroon color to ultimately a black color on the outside, and so you will be able to see that your money did do something. And we will have much more efficient heating and cooling there. They've been telling me that the current insulation is about this thick, and they're putting in six-inch spray foam as they go. So it's going to be a much, much more energy-efficient building when they are done, plus we will have dealt with some of the things that we're failing on the inside. The money that we last borrowed is also going to go to the Kellogg Indoor Air Quality Project. Again, that starts next summer. Will continue at least into the summer of 2025. And we're currently working on the Mayo parking lot reconstruction and the Mayo indoor air quality in the pool area at Mayo High School. Long-term facility maintenance also has many points of approval. So you've got the approval of the plan itself. You'll have a chance to weigh in and approve the actual property tax levy in September and then again in December. And then, because most of these projects are significant in size and are over $175,000, they come forward to you after they've been bid out, and you get a final say of thumbs up or thumbs down on the specific project. So unlike some areas of our budget, long-term facility maintenance actually has probably the most amount of approvals to, from the development of it, from the staff to the ultimate doing of the project. I'll stop there and see if there's any questions. If I could say one more thing. So I did get the plan back from our financial advisor yesterday, and the form had changed just slightly from the Minnesota Department of Education, so we're going to have to refresh this for next week. So just want you to know that if you've studied and memorized, especially like attachments C in particular, it'll look just slightly different next week. Not materially, just slightly different.
John, I want to say, I'm sure our chair would not have noticed that.
I think she might. That's why I'm saying it right now.
Our chair may not have noticed it because the writing is very, very small.
It is very small.
Our chair would have noticed it. I say that with admiration.
Yes.
Any questions, board members? Remind us again, Mr. Carlson, about how this list even, how do we know what we need to facilitate?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. So several years ago, we did do a comprehensive facility study where an actual architect, engineering firm walked through all of our facilities, wrote down all of the issues that they could identify at that time, and then they got scheduled onto the 10-year plan. Actually, we keep a spreadsheet that's more like 15 to 20 years out, so that every project is kind of placed out there when it's going to need to be done. And things do vary from time to time. Sometimes something needs to be moved up because all of a sudden, a lot of potholes have appeared in a parking lot, and so maybe we'll switch one for another, and then we'll push one project out a year. So we're kind of doing that all the time and bringing it to you on a refreshed list every year. But we are following what the experts say need to be done.
And how often do we then go back to the experts to have them take another comprehensive look?
So we're probably at that point where it should be done soon, and we're else, we're in the process of exploring a new service provider that we're going to take a look and see would their comprehensive planning solution be of value to us. So we'll probably come back with possibly a recommendation, should we use a new service for that or not.
Any other questions, our members? No? Thank you, and we'll revisit this on 25. Item 4.1, Annual Board Calendar Update. Are there any items a board member would like to bring forward for consideration on future agenda? Hearing none, I'm going to give board members a heads-up that Superintendent mentioned that we're revising some of the topics for our focus topics to the end of 2023. So we'll be updating that on the ABCD probably in time for the July 25 agenda, so you will actually have something to take a look at changes for on that ABCD, and I'll remind you of that for the next meeting. Our upcoming board meeting dates, July 25, a regular meeting at 5:30; August 1, a regular meeting at 5:30; a study session on August 8 at 5 o'clock. The board will have a school board retreat on August 12 from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and a regular meeting at 5:30 on August 15. There were no questions submitted prior to this meeting on meeting agendas, and at 7:48 and hearing no other business, the meeting is adjourned.